Called to order, clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Here.
Mrs. Rich?
Here.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Here.
Mr. Krafcheck?
Here.
Mr. Parzic?
Here.
The meeting is now open. Adequate notice of the meeting was provided by posting a copy of the time and place on the municipal clerk's bulletin board and mailing a copy of same to the press and the Cape May County Herald on January 4th, 2018. Will everyone please rise to salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think we're going to go a little bit out of order than what's on the actual agenda and start with the presentation from Ocean Wind rather than have them sit through everybody's reports and so on and so forth. So, we're going to start the work session with utilities.
All right, today we have a representative from Ocean Wind to do a presentation and Elizabeth? Right, Elizabeth is going to speak?
I'm Monica.
Okay. If you could come up to the microphone and turn that on and then it'll make it clearer for the minutes, too.
Great. Perfect. We just have a presentation for some visuals.
Okay.
So, this is my coworker. Her name is Beth Truseder and she is head of Open and Fairness for... Ocean Wind, yeah. Ocean Wind. And we're going to give you a little introduction to Orsted, our company, and Ocean Wind's project.
Okay.
Thanks, Monica. As Monica said, I'm Beth Truseder. I'm our senior regulatory advisor for Ocean Wind. Ocean Wind is an Orsted project and we don't have a lot about in our presentation on Orsted as a whole, so I'll just give you a quick background. Orsted is based in Denmark, in Copenhagen. That's where our global headquarters is and it's a clean energy company. Back in 2017, we fully divested our fossil fuel portfolio and we also made a commitment to move away from all coal-powered heat and electricity generation by 2023. So, the company as a whole is now moving fully towards clean energy. As part of that, we have a significant portion of our portfolio is dedicated to offshore wind. About 85% of our capital is employed in offshore wind. We were the first developer of offshore wind off the coast of Denmark back in 1991 when we built our first offshore wind farm. And for the past 25 years, we've maintained our position as the global leader in offshore wind development. We entered the U.S. market in 2015 when our North American president came over here. We established a headquarters in Boston, Massachusetts because of the offshore wind goals that they had set there after. You know, we've seen continual growth along the East Coast and we opened our Atlantic City office here in New Jersey just back in May of this past year. So, we're really excited to be in New Jersey. We're excited to see the goals that New Jersey has set. We think it's an incredibly important movement towards clean energy and towards moving the state's general energy portfolio towards green energy. So, with that, as I mentioned, we entered the U.S. market in 2015. We have four projects under development right now. Bay State Wind off the coast of Massachusetts, about 12 miles off the coast of Martha's Vineyard. We have Constitution Wind off the coast of Connecticut. And then we have Ocean Wind. That's the project off the coast of Atlantic City here. And we have Coastal Virginia Offshore Wind, also called Seaval, and that's a project off the coast of Virginia. Our Massachusetts and New England project is a joint venture with Eversource, which is the utility up in the Northeast. And then Coastal Virginia is a joint venture with Dominion Energy, the utility further south in Virginia and, you know, obviously they're elsewhere as well. A little bit of background on Ocean Wind. Like I said, we opened our Atlantic City office just this past May. And we, the lease area itself could power approximately 3.5 gigawatts of offshore wind generation. Obviously, how we develop that lease area will depend significantly on New Jersey's energy demands and clean energy demands specifically. We have at this point, as Orsted, 24 offshore wind farms developed globally. We're in Germany, in Denmark, in the Netherlands, and in the U.K. So, the majority of our offshore wind farms are off Northern Europe. And then we've also, at the same time that we entered the U.S. market, we also entered the Asian market with an office in Taipei in Taiwan. Moving forward to this slide, you can see a graphical representation of where Ocean Wind is placed. Like I mentioned Atlantic City and that our headquarters is there. Atlantic City is technically the closest onshore point to the lease area, though, as you can see, it obviously borders all of, you know, the coast of New Jersey. We are one of several lease areas off the coast of New Jersey. There's also an adjacent lease area further to our north, which is owned by a competitor of ours, U.S. Wind. There's also a lease area further technically off the coast of New York, but, you know, it's in federal waters, it's kind of off everyone's coast, that's further north and that's owned by Equinor, which was formerly Statoil. And then there is a lease further south and that's owned by Deepwater Wind. We typically build utility-scale projects, so you may or may not be familiar with an offshore wind project off the coast of Block Island, off of Rhode Island called, well, it's a deep-water project called Block Island Wind Farm. And that's five turbines. We typically build larger projects designed to bring the cost down significantly. You know, the economies of scale there are significant offshore, so we typically build larger projects that therefore are much cheaper for the states. I'll just note that our project in Virginia is actually a pilot project and that is just two turbines. You know, obviously there's, Virginia has decided to go forward with a pilot project rather than utility scale at this point. Like I said, you know, we were the first to develop an offshore wind farm, as you'll see on page five or slide five. We've had a lot of firsts over the years since 1991 and part of that is bringing down costs. We've been a frontrunner in cost reductions and part of that has been establishing utility-scale wind farms and with that, growing the technology. One of our, we recently, I believe it was in September, we decommissioned our first wind farm after 25 years of operation. And over the course of 25 years, what we generated in clean energy from that project, we can now develop or generate in just a course of 17 days from one of our new projects. So, if you can imagine the innovation that's, oops, sorry, that's taken place from when we first established an offshore wind farm to now, it really is significant. And that's meant just costs have dropped incredibly. The amount of power we can generate is much more significant and obviously, you know, the advancements that we've come through in terms of mitigation for environmental issues, all different issues have been, have really changed over just a matter of decades. So, I'll sort of skip over a little bit of this slide, but just to note that we're, our project is the most advanced right now. I mentioned the other lease areas off the coast of New Jersey that are relevant for, you know, coastal communities. Our project is the most advanced at this point. We've gotten initial site assessment approval from the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management under the Department of the Interior, the federal agency that permits our lease area. That really is just a permit that says, okay, you can go look at your site now. Not much happens with it, but it is a, you know, as you can imagine, the federal permitting process is lengthy, so it was a hallmark for us. And we also opened, we, with that, deployed a buoy that is measuring the wind resource. Obviously, one of the critical elements of developing a wind farm is figuring out how much wind there is there. New Jersey is very lucky to have a very strong wind resource. Obviously, one of the reasons that this is a key market for us, so we have a buoy out there measuring the wind. I'm conscious that you all have quite a bit of other things on your agenda, so I'll move through this a little bit more quickly. We expect to generate about 1,000 jobs with the construction of the offshore wind farm and then operations and maintenance, which would last the remaining 25 years, are typically about 100 jobs that are accompanying a large project. With that, that doesn't include sort of manufacturing and the supply chain that would move into the state along with the project itself. So, you know, as the industry is new to the U.S., we expect a lot of the suppliers to move from Europe to the U.S. and so there's a lot of opportunity there. And New Jersey has made it clear that, you know, that this state is open for business in terms of supply chain and manufacturing coming in. So, yeah, I guess the last thing I'll mention here, just glancing through the remaining slides, you know, we are very cognizant that there are other stakeholders in the ocean that have had a long history off the East Coast in particular, you know, fishermen, recreational boating, shipping, all those different groups. And so, one of our key engagements that we do early on and throughout the process is engaging with all those different ocean stakeholders. That's both through the federal agencies. They have different groups that they convene as part of the permitting process and then we also do that just locally and on the state level. So, that's part of our major initiative right now and coming and talking to communities about how this project will impact their areas and, you know, what we're bringing to the state. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions and obviously, you know, Monica and I will stick around.
I have a question for you.
Yeah.
What is your primary goal here in the community of Stone Harbor?
So, I would say first and foremost, to be a good neighbor. You know, we certainly want to make sure that as we build a project and as we, you know, establish headquarters here, that you all are familiar with us as a company. In terms of, you know, we don't expect there to be significant impacts, so I'd say primarily just sort of a meet and greet introduction at this point.
And this is from your Atlantic City facility?
That's right. Yeah. Thank you. Yeah.
I had attended a luncheon where a representative from Deepwater was there. This was probably, say, two months ago. And at that time, the representative from Deepwater said that they had a leased area that was 14 miles off the coast of Cape May Point. Then I subsequently, maybe a week later, read that you acquired Deepwater. So, then my next thought was, does that mean, but you have not mentioned that leased area in so far in what you've spoken about. Is that something that is not planned to be developed through Orsted or is Deepwater? Then you did mention Deepwater as well. Are they still their own company? What is happening between the two?
Very good question. So, we announced that we've acquired them, I guess now, a month ago.
Okay.
Actually, exactly as of today. I know because I got married a month ago and I remember that announcement. And we have not closed that deal.
Okay.
So, we're not allowed to, personally, I'm not allowed to talk to anybody from that company until we close the deal. There's a wall until it's closed. As soon as we know more, what, you know, obviously, as we integrate both companies, there'll be a lot of discussion about how to proceed with that leased area. And at that point, we'll probably be, you know, I hope to be able to answer any questions about that. But at this point, everything's, there's kind of a wall between both companies until the deal closes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because during that luncheon, it was mentioned that 14 miles off the coast of Cape May Point, you're going to be able to see the turbines.
Yeah.
So, when you're talking off the coast of Atlantic City, of course, that has a different impact on us down here in southern end of the state.
Yeah.
So, that's where I'm just wondering where that lease portion sits and so on. But you've answered the question. At this point, you really don't have that...
No, though, we are, we are fully aware of those issues, so as we go and evaluate and integrate, that'll be certainly a conversation that we'll have.
Okay.
Yeah. But no, I don't have, I'm not privy. It's as if they're a competitor right now, because effectively they are until we close.
And just so everybody on council knows, the reason why we asked Orsted to be here is because you could, I attended the monthly Cape May County Conference of Mayor's meeting and Deepwater was there. And then Orsted had been contacting us for a meeting and contacting the local municipalities for a meeting. And it seemed that this was starting and it seemed like something everybody should get in early. As far as council, everybody be aware that these discussions are being had all over the coast at this point. So, I thought it would be best that if you heard directly from Orsted and also the public then can become aware that these discussions are beginning and it's not just happening in Stone Harbor. The company has been reaching out all throughout the county and I'm assuming Atlantic County, Monmouth County and so on.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
Slowly but surely making our way to all the different communities, yeah.
And we were, just like Joan's question was, what is, why do you want to meet with us in Stone Harbor? And you've answered that as far as to be a good neighbor.
Yeah.
Give us some information, you know, start to just build a relationship so we know what's happening moving forward. It's something that the governor is also pushing, so I thought it best if everybody get on the same page and be aware that this is on the horizon. No pun intended.
And just to give you sort of a sense of timeline, typically these projects, like I mentioned the federal permitting process, these are not quick projects that get built in a day. So, we're talking about probably early 2020s to mid 2020s for actual construction. So, you know, to your point, we certainly want to come introduce ourselves early in the process, not once things have sort of started moving.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. And I think that that was important for full council to be aware early in the process, the public early in the process. It just keeps everybody working together and on the same page and with information and communication. So, anybody have any questions of Orsted? Probably a ton, but at this time...
I guess the land-based distribution is just with existing infrastructure.
Exactly.
Like city electric or somebody like that.
Right, exactly. We would potentially pay for the upgrades to the grid, but it would all be along existing, all the existing onshore infrastructure. Yeah.
Anybody else have anything? Okay. Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you. We appreciate being invited.
Thank you. Thank you. Anything more from utilities? Negative? Okay. So, we'll jump back up to the beginning to ANF. I guess Jill, I'll give it to you.
Okay, thank you. The beach tag typically is under recreation and tourism. However, because the holiday seasoning is getting close, we need to get it out there, advertise, and we're on a daily basis. People are asking us, what is our beach tag? So, we felt it was time to unveil them. So, at this point, I would take that time and...
Drumroll.
We're going to unveil the regular season tag.
Go beach tag, go beach tag.
Some of you have already seen it.
Very nice. Ready? Ta-da!
Oh, that's huge! So, this is, for those who are not familiar, we have had the pleasure of several snowy owls on the impiggy landing in our community and it's given a lot of pleasure to people. So, we felt that it was...
Snowy owl's time.
Snowy owl time. And as you can see, there are actually people, so we're very, very excited about this. And this year, because they, they're so special, we've decided to do a limited edition at Christmas where you can actually buy both tags. You will receive a limited edition certification and there are only going to be 400 of them, so get in line early. Come on Thanksgiving weekend, we will start Friday. So, now we can actually put our ad out, too. So, that would be interesting. We couldn't put our ad out. So, they will go on sale Friday, the 23rd, from 10 to 4:00, Saturday from 10 to 4:00, and Sunday from 10 to 3:00. And they will be available downstairs in our lobby, so...
Is that the only place they're going to be available is Borough Hall?
Yes.
Okay.
And Jill, what's the price? The price? Funny rate? For each? And when you, what Jill was talking about is there's going to be two in one box for the special edition. You're going to get a summer and a winter. For Christmas. $23 for the two or $46?
No, $46.
For the one box?
Now, in addition to the 400, is there going to be then just the regular holiday tag available, like another 1,000 of them or something?
3,000.
3,000, okay. Okay, so 400 of the limited and then 3,000 will be this one that's right here that you're in front of?
Yeah.
Okay. When, May, April, Easter-ish?
So, these are only commemorative and cannot be used on the beach?
No.
Oh, no, they're good. Okay. I wanted to clarify that. Okay. Fine.
Okay. Excellent. They're nice. I like snowy owl. He's very nice, the snowy owl. So, continue on.
Wait, want me to move them out of the way? A little help there, Mark? Okay, sorry. Okay, now we can go into the regular reports.
It's tough to file the beach...
The snowy owl?
I'll do my best. On a capital project front, the contractor for the 82nd Street Tennis Court Building has started work and has completed the footing, foundation, block, walls, and first floor framing. Construction work for the 895th Street bathroom renovation is still ongoing. The contractor has completed the interior demolition, rough plumbing, HVAC, electrical, and interior walls. And I believe that we have a change order to discuss today for consideration by council. The bid opening for the 2018 utility and road program was November 1st and the apparent low bidder is asphalt paving systems in the amount of $2,734,800, which is approximately $300,000 under our budget, so we're very happy with that. You have a resolution on your agenda to approve that contract. Should that contract approved, we'll move that right into construction as soon as possible. Lastly, our office is currently working on the Beach Patrol Building Assessment Report. We anticipate having that final report completed by the end of this month. Last item, I think I'll make Margaret very happy, is that we have the Tax Assessor 200-Foot Tool completed. We'll be sending her that link within the next day or two. We'll kind of come over to her office, so she'll be able to press a button and get her list a lot easier than she did before.
More reliable.
That 2.7 million include 108th Street paving?
Yes.
Yes.
That does.
And the 88th.
And 88th.
And the 88th street, so they'll be happy. The folks on 108th who have been told that the top of the list for like four years, finally it'll come to fruition.
Finally on the list, yes.
Okay. Okay. Good.
We're hopeful that by the end of the year, we'll see a shovel in the ground on the streets.
Okay. I was promised cookies when that happened.
The, so the bathroom, the bathroom renovation's still on track?
I'll discuss that. We'll discuss that when we come up to Public Works if you don't mind.
Anything else, engineer, with that? Next, tax collector?
Hello, everyone.
Hi.
In case it slipped your mind, taxes are due this week. And in case you didn't realize, the grace period has been extended till Tuesday because Saturday's, the 10th is Saturday and Monday's a holiday. Utility bills will be going out this week. Completed the utility budget a couple of weeks ago and I'll have the tax budget complete by the end of this week. And other than that, we have the conference coming up. I'll be sending Kate to the conference this year so she can get her license renewal. That's about it. Does anyone have any questions?
Nope.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Deb.
Tax assessor?
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you, Mark. I have a pile about this big on my desk waiting for those, that GIS. But anyway, I don't have much to report this month. I did notice that there is an increase in volume of sales going on right now since September the 10th. We've had 33 real money transactions. Some might not be usable because it's new construction or whatever, but the volume is there. And the only other thing I have is that I still have four open state tax court appeals and I've been trying to reach out to their attorney. But apparently she has 750 across the state, so she's pretty busy with, you know, with tax appeals. So, that's all I have. If anybody has any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret.
Construction?
Hello, everyone.
Where's your other half?
He is doing some inspections right now. He's tied up, yeah. He was running a little late trying to get things done, so... This, this month, we had seven demos, seven demolitions, six new house permits were brought in. It's still going strong. Probably have about another six or seven that are in the bin right now to look at to be approved. So, we still have, still have a lot going on as far as single family, a lot of smaller permits coming into, it's still busy, which is good. As Mark said, the, we just got the call for the inspections for, the rough inspections for the bathrooms on 95th Street. So, they're set up for tomorrow, so try to get them squared away so they can close that thing in.
Any updates on either the Reeds or the 98th and 3rd project or what is it more?
They, yeah, they're, they're really pushing to try to get, what I heard from them was the 17th.
From who, Reeds?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's what I...
The 17th of what month?
Of this month, to try to get something open, which...
Wow.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's a little bit of a stretch, I think.
Okay.
That's tentatively.
Okay.
With inspections, they're going to have to pass everything. All the prior approvals are going to have to come in before we issue anything. They're pushing pretty hard, but it's probably going to be another week or two later than that, so...
And anything of interest on the other?
On the...
The project 98th? Is it 99th and 3rd? 98th, 99th?
No, no, it's, it's tight right now. It's good. It's in good shape. No more leaks.
Okay.
I think they had one small problem last week or a week and a half ago, but that was rectified and I think it's, it's...
I know that one store has gone back in. I don't know if the rest have or not.
No, they haven't.
On the first...
No, no. There are a few permits that are, that are still open right now that are coming in to do the finishes for those. Scattered permits for mechanical equipment for the pizza place. Other than that, no, they're just, the other, the other four will be simple.
Okay.
Drywall permits, trim and flooring and things like that, nothing crazy.
Okay.
The pizza Nemo's will be the tough one to get up and running because they had so much involved in that, you know?
Makes sense.
Yeah. Other than that, I really don't have anything else. It's kind of a little, it's quieted down a lot in town as far as any complaints.
Oh, that's good.
It's quieted down, yeah. It's been nice.
Good, good to hear.
Guess everybody left.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Nice little break with the phone calls, yeah. Anything else?
Nope.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next CFO?
Couple of weeks ago, we got the 2018 Best Practices Inventory Survey we have to complete. I just wanted to go over that real quick. This year, there are 61 questions. Last year, there were only 25. So, the best practices is a, varies from year to year.
Yeah.
The, some of the things that they added this year was, had to do with authorities and pilot programs, which were, neither were applicable to Stone Harbor. We scored a 97% as far as the yes answers. And last year with the 25 questions, we scored a 96%.
Good.
And if there's any questions, I can go over them, but they're all fairly straightforward.
That's good.
Well, here's a straightforward question. Who do we do this for?
This is required by, who's the governor? Wasn't, was it Christie or? Yeah, Christie, Christie instituted this and it's tied to state aid. So, if you score below a certain grade, they start withholding a small percentage. If you score below a 75, you lose 25% of your, of your aid, so...
Oh, state aid?
State aid, yeah. Or any of these receipts tax, too. So, they put a little financial incentive in there.
So, that helps us with bonding?
It doesn't. There are questions this year they did add that were related to bonding, which, which we answered yesterday because we did take, we did just go out to bond, which was one of the questions and we are, you know, we submit to rating and all that, so...
Thanks, Jim.
Or clerk?
Cash balance in the checking account.
Cash balance in the checking account, one million nine hundred and eighteen thousand seven hundred and eighty-four dollars and ninety-nine cents. The cash dispersments this month in the checking account, one million eight thousand four hundred and twenty-four dollars and ninety-two cents. In the water and sewer accounts, the cash balance, one million one hundred and ninety-three thousand six hundred and ten dollars and two cents. And the cash dispersments for the month, seventy-six thousand nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars and seventy-one cents. The barrack clerk's office for the month, we took in fees were three thousand eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars. And the construction office, their fees were a hundred and twenty-four thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Planning board report. I was not at the planning board meeting. I was on vacation. It was October twenty-second, so I will turn it over to Charles and Jill to talk about what's on there.
Either way. Item number one is the setback exceptions. The board passed unanimously, correct, Jill?
Correct.
To move forward with the final version of this ordinance to be brought forward to council. Essentially, what this ordinance will do is give or make a change to our current ordinance that requires a ten-foot setback for front stair sets. And our current ordinance, we discussed this at some length at the meeting, does allow for encroachment beyond the ten-foot setback. However, there is a very, there's a very strong limitation with regard to the size of a porch or landing, if and when that encroachment does take place. The board took, I guess it wasn't testimony, but heard commentary from designer, Mark Asher of Asher Sloan White. He was in support of these changes, not only from the standpoint that we've already discussed at length here and at previous planning board meetings related to increasing the first floor height across the island, that you need obviously more room to get to grade elevation when you increase that. So, this relief will afford more ample opportunity to descend and ascend into the household in a more seamless fashion and reduce the grade at which you have to descend or rise into the house. But Mr. Asher also brought up, and we discussed this as well, that the aesthetics that are offered by the current ordinance are somewhat limited. And he gave commentary on the history of Stone Harbor and how, if you look back in the historical days of Stone Harbor, many, many homes had the stair sets protrude, and I could see Josie nodding because she's.
Because I'm old.
Somewhat familiar with it. No, I didn't mean that. So, we heard that testimony, and I think we've also heard in the past at planning board meetings as well from Mr. Blackman, who I see in the audience here, who supports this as well. I think it'll benefit Stone Harbor as a whole, and it will be good for the community, so we should see that very soon in ordinance format.
Does that have to come back to planning board as the final draft?
I.
Where was it at?
My understanding was we had a vote and unanimously approved to bring it forward to council.
Bring it to Ford, council, yeah.
So, I actually considered it might be on this meeting, but I assume it'll be on the next one.
And it was something also that our code enforcement zoning officer had recommended to. Was hoping to get back here in time to talk about it with us, but he had given us some samples of what they currently look like with the cutting off the middle of a porch because, you know, to comply with our.
Did he give specific addresses that you could go see?
He did, and I forgot.
He did.
Yes.
We don't have them in front of us right now.
No, I can't think.
Might be advantageous to get them to council so they can actually go take a look at it.
I have a question. This doesn't appear to do anything to side yard setbacks, correct?
I believe it affords, offers more relief for new homes that are compliant with our code to encroach up to, you'll read in there, three and a half feet for side yard access.
Yeah, five by five landing and then three and a half feet.
Right.
Or less than three and a half feet.
And that's something you feel we need to do? I'm just leery of, I'm leery of tampering with the side yard setbacks in any way. I think I talked about that.
The most important relief, I think, is related to the front, for sure, because you're really impacting two elements. One is to get in and out of the home, but the other one, as I mentioned, is really the aesthetics. A lot of these homes that are having to comply with, and we, you know, will certainly share with council some of the addresses, this ten-foot setback are now having really oddly-looking stair sets that are recessed into the house, and so it's as much aesthetics as it is actual functionality.
Yeah, yeah.
On the front.
It goes through the porch.
Right.
I understand that, but there's just a couple of things here that we're not limiting on the front. We're not limiting the size of the landing.
Correct.
So, and there's also verbiage in here that says you'll be able to take that landing to within five feet of the front property line. So, aren't we running the risk of people having landings that are fifteen feet wide and eight feet or ten feet long? And they're, it's going to, it's possible that you could end up with a deck-like structure five feet from the property line, and they're calling it a landing. So, I don't know that we want to have absolutely no limits on these landings.
Well, I don't think you would ever have a landing at five feet, because the setback would be five feet. That's where your stair set has to start. So, I don't know how you would, we put a height limit of eight feet for that landing so that you can only go up to eight feet, and then put a landing, and then continue up to your base flood elevation eleven. So that if you wanted to do a landing somewhere in the interim to break it up and still give it a good design aesthetic, that that would be a good limitation. But the five yard is the front setback, and you're allowed to have a landing in there without restriction. There was discussion that the market, so to speak, is self, sort of self-regulating in this, is that you would never see anyone do a landing of that size or caliber, to which I think you're alluding to. Because you're still, you're still limited to percent of coverage. So, as much as you, if you do a big landing like that, guess how much you're giving up inside your house, which no one in their right mind would ever do. Not saying everyone is in their right mind, but.
Right.
Saying that it's highly unlikely. If you firmly believe we need more.
Here's Ray.
Well, I just, I worry when I don't see any limits anywhere, where it's just, you know, you could put a landing in your.
And again, I think it's self-limiting because if you could conceivably build a house and utilize a lot of that square footage of the house for things that are permitted, but you would certainly never.
So, you're saying the limitation is actually in the lot coverage? That's where the limitations.
So, for instance, if I wanted to build a single-family residential home and integrate a garage into it, I could make a massive garage and use up almost my whole first floor, and then no one would ever do that.
Question where it says the less that Ray was alluding to, three and a half feet from the side of rear property line, that is not in red, so is that something that's already existing?
Yeah, I believe that is not.
That's not a change.
Correct. If it's not in red, it's not a change.
Yeah, so that's how I'm reading it. That's the existing regulation.
Oh, Ray has the.
Ray has arrived.
Just in time.
Ray is in the building.
Hi, Ray.
Hi.
Zoning Ray.
This is the finished product?
Well, this is just some examples of what we've been looking at out in the field. Some, there's the first three are pictures of actual houses that have been constructed, and why, how they have to really set back the steps from the front yard setback. So, that was the first pictures one that's been constructed, the second one, and the third one is one of, where they actually took the landing and made it into landscaping. They sort of made it part of landscaping instead of parts of step of the house, because that's the only way they could get it to work. And then the fourth page is some plans that I had just recently, I had rejected because it was only five feet from the setback. And so, this architect on the fourth page is proposing to change his planner boxes to look like the previous picture that I had sent on picture number three, because it doesn't meet the zoning ordinance when the steps are right there. And then the next picture is one that comes right up to, and it shows basically it's the same, same thing. This is one that's on my desk right now that I'm rejecting because the steps go, start at the property line, two steps up, a landing, two steps up, another landing, and then they go to the porch, and I said, you got to limit your landings to five feet by five feet, and the steps, that particular one, they cannot start at the property line, so he has already agreed to push them back five feet. But under the same thing, they're trying to give us a nice design, but with the house being, the homes being a little bit higher and things of that nature, the architects would like to see a little bit more leeway on the steps in just the front yard only. And that's what this ordinance changes by the planning board, we're trying to accomplish, so that in our front yards, we can have more elaborate design. Steps can actually go onto a porch. Right now, they can only go to a landing because of the five foot by five foot limitations.
I mean, and in certain lots, and there's, you know, plenty of them out there, it really creates a difficulty, and this is what you end up with. Page one is what you end up with. This would look so much more aesthetically pleasing if this were allowed to be a front porch improper that comes essentially all the way out to where you see those two columns, and then a stair set that descends forward-facing would allow for landscaping on either side of those front stair set. This looks like an apartment complex to me.
That first step we're looking at is ten feet?
That's correct.
So, you're saying what would happen is that first step would come out another five feet?
Yes, and in my mind, the logical conclusion to that is that the front door can then be seen straight, the stair set would be centered, and you'd be able to see the front door, you know, a grand entranceway to the household, and a front porch that, you know, spans the entire width there. I look at this, and it says this is a two-unit.
Is that a single-family home? That first one? It is?
It's at ninety-eight hundred block of Corinthian.
Now, the third picture, Charles.
I'll go to the second one first, and in fairness and interest of full disclosure, I built, designed and built this home, and you can see what, with the elevation, we're dealing with this back on Sunset near the bay, that's how high the house had to be off grade. In order to get that stair set down, you have to come off the side. By all accounts, it's a beautiful home, but wow, what a difference this would make if I could have put that stair set down the front and landscaped on either side of that. It just looks odd, but it's right now what you have to deal with on a lot of this size, the ninety by, a sixty by ninety lot.
So, otherwise, you would have had the stairs coming up.
Right.
Off of Sunset rather than off the side.
Exactly. And again, it's just, it's the aesthetics. Can you accomplish? And this is under the old ordinance, and now this would even be higher, this home. So, now.
This would even be higher?
This would be one foot higher now.
Does this ordinance, as it's written, have any effect on the internal square footage of the first floor?
No.
Does this allow you to increase the square footage and by moving the porch out or taking?
No. Coverage is all the same. Everything's identical.
You're still limited to building coverage on the lot. Building coverage and lot coverage are still two other.
And have.
Parts of the zoning ordinance.
Those are different parameters.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is if you're pulling the stairs now further away from the home, then does that, does that equate to allowing more square footage inside the home now, because you have your stairs further out?
It's still considered a porch, right?
It's still considered part of total square footage coverage.
Yeah, you're.
Wherever, wherever you're building it, you're still limited to seventy percent.
No, I understand, yeah, I get that, Charles, but.
If your design was already seventy percent of your lot coverage, this won't change that. So, by trying to design a really nice elaborate front porch, you could decrease your lot coverage of your structure in order to gain that on your porch, but we're allowed seventy percent lot coverage, so most of the design professionals are designing two sixty-nine and set right close to that when the plans come in. So, sort of yes would be the answer to your question, but then you're limited, you're reducing your lot coverage of your structure in order to get to that, so.
That's what I see.
There's no, no. The parameters are still the same in the.
I'm with you.
Seventy percent. That has not changed.
The lot coverage doesn't change. This just allows the steps to begin within five feet of the property line.
Which is what they need in the third one, correct?
If I'm looking at this, then, if you're, the house on page two, so if those steps came off the front, wouldn't that in essence detract from either the size of the porch or something somewhere if the steps are then coming up and taking up a portion of the lot coverage?
I mean, the whole house would have been designed.
Is that making sense?
Quite frankly, the whole house would have been designed differently from the get-go because.
Right.
But.
But you know what I'm saying? Does that, is that, am I understanding it correctly?
But you still have to, you still have to comply with the seventy percent coverage rule.
Right, so you still would have to.
It would have gone through some of that wall, the steps.
Exactly.
Just looking at these pictures, now, does the front, is a porch considered part of the lot coverage?
Yes.
It is, okay. So, if the steps, if the steps are moved in such a way where you could collapse your porch or even eliminate a porch, then you have increased the interior square footage of the house in the same footprint, correct?
Yeah.
So, you have more living space in the same footprint, right?
But it would be the same now, right, if you chose to enclose this porch?
Now, once you enclose a porch, now it's under building coverage as well.
Okay.
An open porch only counts under lot coverage, and enclosed porch is in building coverage.
Okay, okay.
So, then that would decrease the size of the structure because of that.
But that's true now, anyway.
Yes.
That doesn't change anything, right?
Right.
That is in play right now. I could make my porch as small as possible to gain more.
Yeah.
At some point.
More living space.
Borderlines on absurdity, but it's absolutely the case right now.
And the answer to your question, Mayor, yes, if you did take those steps off the front, it may only be eight square feet, but you have to make it up somewhere else.
Somewhere, even if the porch then comes in.
Yes.
Four feet on either side.
Yes.
So, does that make sense to you, Ray?
Yeah.
Okay.
We're good. Just want to talk it out, Mayor.
Yeah. No, I'm with you. Anybody else have any questions, comments, issues? So, I suggest what we do is, we get, we have the ordinance prepared, but in the meantime, I think physically, take the time and go look at this. You know what I mean, council people? Go look and kind of, because it seems like we all could use a little bit more education in the area before actually casting a vote, or am I? You know what I mean?
Ken, Charles, would you give us the address?
Yeah, the first one is ninety-eight, it would be like ninety-eight nineteen, I think.
Ray, do you have the addresses?
The first one is ninety-eight, oh, Corinthian, I'm sorry.
Corinthian.
If you, you can't miss it. It's ninety-eight nineteen, or as soon as you make a right down Ninety-Ninth Street, make a right on Corinthian, it's on your left. The second one is ten thousand twenty-one Sunset. And then this one, I'm not familiar with.
I'm not sure I could get the addresses to email you to them.
Seventy-four, beach block somewhere.
But I think, you know, with regard to the third one, again, not to, you know, labor it, but I think you're going to end up with a lot of really nice entryways. We have the design professionals that are doing work here, these are not, these are good people with great minds that want to, and homeowners who want to do really beautiful things, but painted in a corner with the current ordinance, you'll see a lot of beautiful installations. And as we go up, things can, entryways can start to look real ugly real quick as we go higher, and, you know, we're already at odds with, you know, are we going to end up with homes on pilings and start to look like some of these North Carolina homes? So, I think we really need to embrace. North Carolina homes? So I, I think we really need to embrace this change and, and look forward to, you know, our design professionals working with it and-
This one looks familiar, but it's not, of Ninety-Ninth and Sunset, where you, when you come back, go out your street-
Yes, yes.
And you make that turn because their whole front yard-
Yes, right on the, the south side, right on my street.
Is raised up like this, with rocks and things.
Exactly, they use a-
But it's not this house.
That's not it, but you're right. They use your regular type stepping stones in a layered format.
Right.
So this is, the third one's the optimum that you think is-
Well, I think you're gonna end up with, I mean, you're gonna end up with installations that are more like that, or more creative.
It's attractive. I think it's very attractive, in my opinion.
I apologize.
Compared to this first one.
Yeah, I apologize for being late.
It softens that, it softens the dramatic nature of the transition. I mean, right, you look at the first, the second one, I mean, the first one's not that great of a transition, but you look at the second one, and you're, you're going up, you know.
Looks like you said, an apartment building.
Yeah.
The one that I had brought to the, to the planning board, I don't have with me, I was running late today. We had a, an emergency on one of the jobs I was inspecting. I walked in and we smelled, smelled gas, and we had to-
Oh.
So I got late. But anyways, the one that I wanted to bring up here was also similar, where they had the big front porch, and they had the steps on the front, but when they had to slide, they actually had to push the steps back into the porch, and it split the porch in two little pieces. So now it's not a sitting porch anymore that you can really sit on, because of the design from the professional, and it actually took, they had to recess the steps in, if you can picture it, and it just cut the porch in half, or in thirds.
Yeah, and, you know, for purposes of illustration, this is a home on Berkeley that they paid three million for the land for. So, ooh, these are homeowners that are willing to spend some money to make it look nice, and I, I saw that printed. Not appealing.
Right.
Anything else? Anything else you want to add, Ray?
Uh, no, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Just checking.
I like that one.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, so that will bring forward at the next council meeting.
The only other item on planning board was, uh, we will need to amend, um, the master plan, I believe, by resolution related to the, uh, affordable care, or affordable, uh, housing.
Amendments to the master plan are done by resolution?
That's what it looks like.
Does anyone, like, where does that amendment take place? Actually, in the planning board or here?
I think it's just authorizing him to include it.
Aren't we doing it tonight?
Okay.
My, was my understa, I could be wrong. Uh, my understanding was the resolution is to authorize, is authorizing the amendment because-
It's authorizing mod associates to make the amendment?
Because we're passing
All right.
The settlement agreement with, uh, COA.
And it requires that this change be made in the master plan?
In the master plan. We're just authorizing that change. This is my understanding.
Any questions on that, anybody?
Trusting Mott.
Excuse me?
I said, trusting Mott.
So that resolution would come forward the next council meeting, correct, Jill? It's not on the agenda for today, or is that on the agenda for today?
No, this is just a copy of the, uh, planning board's resolution.
Right, so no, okay, so any resolution, okay.
We pass the resolution.
Just for information.
Okay, got it. Okay, anything more at the planning board? I missed a lot.
Nope.
Okay, where are we now, Public Works?
Yes.
That's it, right, A and F? Anybody from A and F have anything more?
That's it.
I keep looking over there.
Thank you. Um, you have before you a copy of, uh, the proposed specific change for the Dyson air blades, and also we have a, um, resolution coming forward for a change order for an increase of seventeen thousand five hundred and ninety-five dollars. The change order basically is for sanitary and safer and more efficient, uh, re, um, I guess you'd call them receptacles. Our bathrooms now are more confined, since it was mandated by the state to put in a family bathroom. So with the water going into the sink, which this does, and the dryers not being on the wall, there is no dripping or wastewater across the floor where you normally go, and creating a slipping hazard. So it's, it's a, a safety issue also. And that's about all.
Okay, I, I have to ask you a question. Um, so what we're asking for is seventeen thousand five hundred and ninety-five dollars for this, for these?
Yes, for the increase in those.
And we had budgeted three thousand?
We had budgeted, but if you recall, I had six hundred thousand dollars put aside for three years for this project, and this project came in at three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, since it was, the money wasn't in a designated fund, the money was taken for other projects throughout the borough.
I believe this change order also has to do with the, um, the walking surface between the, um, water plant and the building itself, does it not?
That's, that's an additional-
That's not what I'm talking about.
No, she's just talking about the faucets itself.
That's number two.
That's change order number two. Are there soap dispensers included in this? Are they, Mark?
No, they're separately. Is that correct, Jerry?
They're separate.
So you would have to take your hands from the water?
No, they're right there, aren't they, Jerry? They're right there, all three are in a row. Doesn't show that there, but they are.
No.
And it, you don't need dryers anywhere else within the entire-
No, not at all.
They were gonna be at a whole other location, you're saying, where you would then move-
Across, like you normally do in that-
Okay.
That thing that blows in your face and all over the floor, that'll be eliminated.
And that would be a total of twenty thousand dollars?
No, seventeen thousand five hundred and ninety-five dollars.
Oh, I thought that was in addition to what was already budgeted.
Yes, it's in addition to what was budgeted. Bringing it up to three hundred and sixty-seven thousand five hundred and ninety-five dollars, rather than the original contract was three hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay, and that's not my question. My question is, let's just talk faucets. There was a, uh, X number of dollars set aside-
And we were given a credit for that.
Okay, so it's not, it's seventeen thousand dollars, seventeen thousand five something for the four of them altogether. There's not, we're not using the original money.
I think there's actually, there's seven of them.
There's seven of them.
There's seven of them.
Seven of them.
Okay.
That, that actually doesn't sound that bad, considering their vacuum cleaners are like eight hundred dollars.
That's right.
Now, do we, do we, these are Dyson, and are these commercial grade, do you know?
Yes. I'm looking at, Jerry.
Yeah, no, I really meant to ask you to ask him.
No, they are. No, I meant, I'm looking at him.
That's kinda what I figured. They're a high-quality product.
They are a commercial, high-quality product, that we don't have to worry about.
Do you wanna show the picture?
I showed, I gave everybody a picture.
We have pictures, yeah.
They all have pictures.
Okay, good. Um, we budgeted three thousand. Was that just for the hand dryers, or for the faucets and the hand dryers?
The three thou, they gave us a three thousand credit towards swapping out, correct?
Base bid credit for faucets and hand dryers was third, three thousand dollars. That's what it says here. It just seems if we're going from three thousand dollars to seventeen thousand dollars, I hope they're made of solid gold, and they never break. And, I mean, is this a new, obviously, it's new. Does this-
Like new technology?
They're tried and tested, and they're all over the world. I just came back from a trip, and they're, they even have more modernized ones than these that are even more money and more efficient. But this is basically what we need in those bathrooms as we speak.
I'm a wee bit old-fashioned. I look at it as whether I would spend that kind of money for my own faucets and hand dryers if I was building a house.
Mm-hmm, I understand.
And I, I'd like to go back to my question, because I don't think I, I was clear enough when I asked it. You said we had a three thousand dollar credit from our original plans. So in other words, we're spending more than twenty thousand dollars for these faucets. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, that was my question.
How many, um, hand, you know, how many units are we eliminating? Are we going seven for seven?
Seven, right.
So we're putting, yeah.
Seven faucets, three hand dryers.
So we're eliminating seven faucets, three hand dryers for seven of these combination units?
Yep.
So we're gaining four hand dryers?
Right.
Yes.
I can do the math.
Yeah, you're good.
Took me a while, but, okay, I see what you're saying.
So this will come forward for, um, in the regular session?
I love the way they look.
Thank you.
And I, I know it's, and we're, again, I've said this before, we're premium town. I think it's befitting, and I have a lot of confidence in our OSK design partners, that they're doing what's, you know-
Thank you, and that facility-
Should be installed in, in, in our town.
If this was not spec, this was, something else was spec.
No, I know.
Yeah, right?
I understand this is a change order.
No, I'm just asking, yeah.
No, no, I know. I'm saying I have confidence in, if they're recommending it, that it's good for our town. I don't think we're dealing with someone that doesn't know what we need and what we should have.
And Jerry, this is your recommendation?
To install them?
Yes. No, not to install them, to go with this design.
That's, yeah, it's our recommendation, that's correct.
Anybody else? So we'll vote on it at the regular meeting?
Correct.
Okay.
And Grant still has some-
Right, still, Grant's got some things to do.
Thank you.
I don't know if I can, uh, top everything that we've talked about so far. Okay, everybody read their, uh, reports?
Yes, yes, Grant.
Any questions on the reports?
I swear.
I'll test you on Friday.
Five thousand dollars.
Okay, I'll take that as a no.
I read mine, absolutely.
All right, uh, November fifteenth is National Recycling Day. And for Public Works, uh, regarding recycling, our recycling numbers for this year are down compared to last year by about, about ten points. Right now, we're at a twenty nine, I believe it's twenty-nine point six, uh, percent for our recycling compared to our, our regular bulk trash, which is down with the, throughout the whole entire county. Um, we're supposed to be at fifty percent for the year, and, uh, I don't believe anybody in the county's gonna make it.
Anybody's there?
I think Avalon is, uh, probably the, the highest percentage rate. I think that has a lot to do with their commercial pickups and the way that people in town, and especially their commercial properties, are separating and actually, um, reporting what they are recycling. So Avalon is-
Maybe we should have a contest.
Gotta do something.
Motivation.
Because this is not just the county, it's the state is asking this to happen. And we did pretty good last year. We were up in the thirties, mid-thirties, and we took a dive this year. Um, so we need to work on that.
And we speculate why we think that happened?
Yeah.
It's, it has a lot to do with what we're picking up off, off the beach, what we're picking out of, um, the public cans are mixed. We're not, we're not sitting there picking like they do out at the, um, at the, um, the station in Woodbine, where they separate the cardboard from the paper, but a lot of our recycling cans that are on the street have regular trash in them, and we, we cannot be sitting there, um, separating that here and now.
So it's as soon as it's contaminated, that's just it?
As soon as it's contaminated, it's not considered, um, cost-effective. It's not recyclable.
I think some of it too has to do with bulk trash. We have a lot of pickers come in and take the trash off of, uh, your property, and that is money in our pocket that they're taking. I know we've always, I think we have an ordinance against it, but we really don't enforce it. And supposedly, years ago, I know, and it happened, they would knock on your door and say, do you mind if I take such and such? But now, it's just, you could put it out at night and it's gone. You go to bed, it's already gone. So-
We separate out the, uh, the heavy metals, and, uh, we do get credit for that through-
So even like beach chairs that people pick up, we get, we get money for that metal. So there is a loss there. And I don't know how we correct that situation.
Well, it has to be a conscious effort by everybody, not only the homeowners, but the, uh, the businesses and us as the, the, um, municipal representatives. So the county has asked us to, uh, look at a, a letter that they have drafted, and to, um, send it out to all of our, our businesses in town. And it talks about, uh, we've been doing this for thirty-one years. They're asking people to, um, to abide by the mandatory recycling ordinances that are in place. And I believe Jill and, and Joan have the, um, the letter, and I believe there was a comment about possibly sending this out to the residents as well, and adding them to this, this-
Yeah, and we can, we can also tweak it to encourage-
To businesses or both? Businesses and residents?
We can do both.
It was targeting-
The letter was, is mainly addressed to businesses.
It's targeting businesses, okay.
Yeah, to get it both out to the residents as well. So with that, um, and go green, we have, um, capital money in place, and we are looking at, at, uh, the costs of replacing all the street and avenue signs in town. We found a product that's made out of recycled material that is gonna cost us overall five hundred dollars less than what the metal, um, signs are, are, um, costing us right now. So I'm gonna bring that before Public Works, show the sign, and see if it's okay to go.
We did, we had show and tell last meeting.
Well, the show and tell was the metal signs.
That's right. Now we have the plastic coming.
We have, yes. It's a plastic, it's a little bit more durable, I believe.
How about for the wind velocity? It's good for that?
That was one of my main concerns with it. Um, we're discussing that with the, the company that manufactures them, to make sure that they'll withstand that. That is one of my concerns.
Okay.
Replacing all of them? All the signs, street signs in town?
All of the street and avenue signs, yes.
Okay.
Crosswalks, yes. Because the, um, the signs we have are there now, and a lot of the poles are rusting out, and they are needing a replacement. I believe we did them nine years ago, ten years ago.
Okay.
We replaced them all. Um, so we're getting ready to do that.
And these should have a longer life?
Yes, I believe so.
I think we said, didn't it, between twenty and twenty-five years?
Yes.
Something around that.
When we changed them out the last time, we didn't change the poles out. This time, we're gonna change everything out.
Okay.
Monday is Veterans Day. Uh, the borough is closed, so, uh, trash and recycling will be delayed by one day. It'll be a Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday pickup. Um, going to the beach, beach access ramps, uh, with the new gates. One was installed at Ninety-Fifth Street, if anybody cares to go take a look at it. This was a request by, um, the police department to erect these. Uh, we went to a seminar in, in the summer up in Ocean City, where, um, they were talking about some of the, the vehicle, um, deaths that they had up in New York City, where they went down the bike paths and took out twenty-five, thirty people. Um, so I believe OEM and, and the police departments got together and, and discussed what we would do in mass, um, audiences, like with what we have out here on Ninety-Sixth Street with the closed, um, events, as well as on the beach, Fourth of July, any, um, of the, uh, heavy activity days, and any threat assessments that the police department may hear of. We're putting these gates up, um, to keep any vehicles from crashing through, going over and, and taking out people on the beach. So right now, we have one at one-eleven, that's totally completed. The one at Ninety-Fifth Street is, um, is erected, it's curing right now with the concrete, and will be painted yellow, um, once the weather gives up, and we get some sunny weather. Then from there, we're gonna go to, um, one hundred and twenty-third Street parking lot. We're gonna do both the, um, the, um, Point Access Road and the, uh, one hundred and twenty-seven, Twenty-Second Street entrance to the beach. Reconstruction on Ninety-Fifth Street is moving a little slower than I was hoping. RTW is the contractor who is working on it right now. They're putting in the, um, wood remains. From there, they're gonna move on to, uh, concrete, uh, sewer laterals, and then concrete work from there. They're gonna move one block at a time. So right now, they're in the three hundred block, and then they'll move to, uh, the two hundred block, right in front of the mayor's house.
Mm-huh.
And then, uh, on to the block here. Hopefully, the police department will be done completely by the time they get up here and start tearing up the road. Um, the Marina- Um, the marina, got an issue with the marina with the lighting. And we have taken some pictures of them, and I'll, I'll let you guys take a look at them. The, the brickwork that is at the pedestal on all the, all the, um, the lights-
I'll pass them down, yes.
Has disintegrated, um, from, from, um, flooding, from the storms that we had, freezing, thawing. So, the top, um, plate has, um, disintegrated on 90% of them. So, we took them all out. Once we took them all out, this is what we found. Everything along the bulkhead, um, and the great channel are rusted to the point where they're not gonna last many, uh, more years. We're going to put the top plates back on, but this is a concern I have for, for safety, that, um, they're gonna fall eventually.
The poles you're talking about?
And I know that we're talking with, with the county-
Pole.
The light posts, yes. We're talking to the county about, um, some open space money to do some work on that. The sooner, the better, if we can get that done. Because like I said, those anchors are holding those posts up. Once those anchors give way, and they rust to the point where they're not gonna be able to withstand the winds, they're gonna come down.
And what was your reference to the open space money? You mean, as far as we're discussing the possibly open space funding or a grant to do something with the marina, we would include that in there, but won't that take a while before any of that would've happened, and do we have the time to wait?
And the bulkheads included in that idea?
Yeah, that was a meeting that I had with Jill in the open space, uh, with Leslie. That was supposed to be a special allocation, which they haven't formally announced yet.
Right.
I mean, are we in a position to be able to wait if that's the condition they're in? Because that, you're talking, what, at least a year?
I don't think-
At least.
Get the money, design, build it.
I don't think, uh, I mean, if they're in danger of being blown over, we do have a bit of wind down here. Uh, we, I don't know that that's a risk we wanna take.
Right, and that's quite, and we don't know how long any of this, yeah, yeah. I think it's something that we just address.
So, I guess that what I'm saying is, if there's some way to correct the situation inexpensively, uh, while we wait for the, you know, the modernization of the whole area, then that's what we should do.
What'll have to happen is the, the pedestals will have to be taken out all the way down to grade and below grade, and then rebuilt with new, um, new steel. Rebar.
Yeah, these don't look good at all.
Grant, are we gonna do that in-house, or is that an in-house project?
Uh, it's something that I would have to talk with the engineer about, on how to rectify the situation. Do we wanna go back with the same materials? Um, I don't think that's the wise thing to do.
And I was thinking we should try to figure something out sooner than later.
Right.
But with, at the same time, though, not throw money at it, only to do something else a year and a half later, if there's a way of doing it properly that-
The actual late fixture, though, is fine, right?
The fixtures, well, we've painted them a few times. As you can see with some of them, the paint's starting to flake away because of the oxidation.
So, we would just look to stabilize them until such times as you can get money to redo it all.
Right.
Right.
That's what I think. Just redo the pedestals.
Just take them down. Just, you know, and they-
Well, you do have-
I agree.
You can do that, but you have people that use that area as, um, night fishing.
How many are this bad, Grant?
How many?
How many of the lights that are down there is it?
The only ones that are in decent shape are the ones in the elevated lots, which are five of them, I believe, on the elevated lot. Everything along the bulkheads from, from boat ramp all the way around to 80th Street that wrap around the bulkhead are rotting away quickly.
Well, I guess-
We definitely need to address it.
Say, how many do you think we would need if we say we retrofitted a handful? How many do you feel is necessary?
Twelve.
And how many are we dealing with there now?
Uh, 20, 26 of them, I believe.
So, we could eliminate maybe half of them, pending-
Maybe we come up with a modified design, get a new plate on it, and drill a, drill new holes in.
I feel like it, yeah, again, correct me if I'm wrong, but I feel like it's, especially if we're scaling down and not, you know, taking on 26 of these, that maybe we can do this in-house. I don't know.
What do you think?
Question for you.
Are the, are the 12-
Assuming we only need 12.
Are the 12 in a row, Grant? They're, are they-
They wrap around the entire-
One after another, 12?
From the kayak racks all the way to, over to 80th Street past the, or the, um, gazebo.
Well, I think we've hit on all the possibilities here. We beef them up, or we take them down, or, you know, I guess you need to get with the engineer and come back with a plan pronto, so.
Okay.
He has a welding mask.
Get the mask out.
Yeah.
Okay, enough bad news. Um, a little bit on the water and sewer department. Right now, we're working on flusher and pressure treating all the hydrants. The, um, it is part of our, uh, insurance, when it comes to our fire insurance, that we know all the, all the pressures of all the hydrants in town, and that's one of the reasons why we did Golden Gate and just redid the, um, the water system back there. There used to be, at the end of Golden Gate, where we had that fire, um, in the circle, the pressure at the hydrant was about 400 PSI. Right now, we're at 960 with the new system that we have in there, which is more than adequate to fight fire in that area. So, the guys are out finishing, and I'm up. Once we get that done, we're gonna, we're gonna collar all the hydrants so that the fire department knows what the pressures are by color codes on the hydrants. So, we don't lose the aesthetic value of the red and white hydrants that we've had for many years. I don't wanna go to the orange and yellows and blues that they have, like in the town north of us and, and the one south of us. Also, the, um, buildings department is doing a really good job, and I will get some pictures for you of the transition of it. We bought a trailer to house our video camera system for our sewer, um, sewers, so we can go in and put a crawler in there and video the sewers, so that we can use that in conjunction with our infrastructure program, as well as keeping up with the DEP requirements of doing such, that we have to do these inspections. But the, the buildings department is, has taken a blank trailer, created a room that's gonna house the computer system, um, and the monitoring system. They have put in shelving, electrical, um, and, um, cabinets, um, in this, all built in-house, so that we can take the trailer out, and everything is in, in a controlled environment. So, they're out of the elements when they're doing the cammering system in that, in, uh, town. So, it's looking real nice. Once it's done, I'd like to show it off to you. So, hopefully, it'll be done by, um, February. And that's all I got. Any questions?
Any questions for Grant?
Okay.
Does not appear so.
Everybody vote?
Thank you.
Not yet?
Not yet.
Not yet.
There's still time.
Poles are gonna close?
Poles close at eight.
I don't know.
We'll be there. Thank you, Grant.
We were going to go into closed session if we had the time. I do not think we have the time. I've got 4:21, so that would be nine minutes. I don't think that we have the time.
I can fill in six of the nine minutes.
Okay, so good. We're gonna push that closed session off then.
Yeah.
Floor is yours.
I have, I have a problem, and I need all your help to fix it. We've got several residents in 200 block, 108th Street, 109th Street, that have been complaining to me about the parking situation there. They wanna basically know, and I could go back and give you all the history of it, but they basically wanna know, why can't they parallel park in the off-season? You know, why are we holding them to angle parking in the off-season months? Because one of our newer police officers had issued some warnings, and this got everybody up in alarm. You know, we've always done this. Nobody's ever bothered us. Um, and I, you know, I don't, I don't know why, yeah, why, why can't they? I mean, if, if we need to put a sign up that says, like we have at 96th Street, "No red turn May to whatever," and we do the same thing, "Parallel parking permitted, May to October," or whatever the months happen to be, let the residents park that way. And then Grant was nice enough to help me out because his, he had his guys up there starting to put angle parking lines in, and these people went crazy on the phone with me to get down there right away and stop this, you know. One lady said she'll go to jail before she'll let Grant put, before she'll let Grant put sign. So, I think we need to get some people together and feel, what's our stance on this? What are we gonna do? And I, I did tell them. I said, you know, "We'll look at this. You might not get the answer you want, but we ought to put this to bed somehow." You know, whether we have the right people get together and discuss. We had talked about having a parking committee at some point to look at these things. Maybe we should just do away with the angle parking.
How would they feel about that?
I, I don't know. I, I, but, you know, they're also asking me, "How come we have to angle park here, and in, and in the 100 block, same with street, they don't have to?" Why is that? That's a good question.
I don't know. I mean, you think the history of when who decided how that parking would all be?
We ought to get the right, you know, council people together and the department heads, and sit down and talk about this, and come up with, "This is what we're gonna do going forward," because they, you know, they're really antsy about this, and I-
So, it is the 200, it's 200 block of 108th, and where else? Is there another one as well?
109th Street.
109th?
And 110.
110th?
And 110.
And then down at the villa, they parallel park.
Only when they feel like it.
Right, but I know that that varies also.
The other, the other thing is, and I, you know, I think if I were living on one of those streets, I wouldn't want lines put out there, because it gives it, it gives it like a commercial, like a mall parking lot feel, you know, like-
Well, wait, I guess somebody, I would think it, if somebody needs to determine how many parking spaces are lost. If you get rid of the angle parking, and then those people are gonna be jockeying for spots, are they gonna be sorry they did it?
Right.
How many spaces is there?
Yeah, there's a lot to consider here, but I think we ought to do it somehow. I don't, and I don't know what the right mechanism is for making this happen.
Isn't there an ordinance that says how to park on each street?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what he's-
Yeah, and that can easily be changed if we determine it should be changed. And right now, they must angle park.
That's what the police are writing the warnings on. Sure, makes sense.
Is a must angle park.
It's never been signed or lined at all.
And some of the confusion that's down there is you have driveways where people will come in, they'll angle park, and then they'll overlap somebody's driveway.
Right. So, if it isn't properly lined, that can end up happening?
Correct.
Correct.
Yep.
It's, it's almost, it's, it's almost like if you're going to angle park, you gotta be lined.
Right.
Or that's what happens.
Because where does it start?
Not, not necessarily.
I mean-
It gets, it's-
Well, they get along on Golden Gate without lines, right?
I was just gonna say, on our, we have no problem at all, and I don't see what the big issue is. What, what's the big issue, whether you-
And don't they sometimes on Golden Gate have the random parallel parker and an angle parker and a ca- No?
No. Everybody knows to angle park all the way down.
Because you, you have signs, though, right?
Yes, there is.
We have one sign before you come in, but there is, there are no lines, but everybody knows you angle park. And I don't know what-
You could put signs that don't have lines and just say, "Park cars headed into curb."
I think you could-
Well, we have, we have signs that, that indicate angle parking. I mean, we can put them up, you know, intermittently down the, down the street so that everybody's aware of it.
They won't like more signs.
But, and we could do, though, but, I mean, it could be the angle parking, park cars headed in the curb and the months.
Yeah.
And make it to certain months. Just like you said with this sign, if that, I mean, that could really rectify, then the summer, when they need the parking, it will become available through angle parking, and then in the off-season, when they would prefer to parallel park, they'll parallel park. And then in the summer, you wouldn't lose all those spots.
Essentially, that-
And then you write an ordinance, and then it's legal, and off you go.
That's, that's what they ask for. That's what-
That could work.
So, and I, and I'm-
We could try it.
With that, but then again, I don't know, and I understand what Grant's saying with, because when people do the angle parking, they do encroach on people's space, uh, driveways, and I get that. But again, I don't, I'd hate to see, I'd hate to see us put lines on all those.
So, if we, but if we were to flip-flop, you couldn't line it. You know what I mean? If we were gonna make it four months of the year, you angle park, and the other eight, you don't, we couldn't line it.
Well, I think that would solve all their problems if we-
Couple of signs that said that.
But we have to amend the ordinance to say that.
Right, and that's relative, I mean, that's not, that's relatively easy. And we do it on what you're saying. You said 110th, 109th, 108th?
Do we have to put a sign up? I mean, if we change the ordinance, and then you notify-
Well, maybe you know.
You have to? I mean, it's word will spread.
You don't have to put a sign up. Yeah. Usually, we don't take questions, but we will let Joan answer, ask a question, or give us guidance.
Do you have the yellow paint to put all those around and get them to see something and stuff like that? If you have a driveway or you're possibly, okay, a certain amount of that is covered with the yellow paint precaution, so people aren't close to that driveway, if you're talking about your angle parking, you need to protect an area for driveway, the yellow paint would do that.
Correct.
It doesn't really do.
Not angle parking.
Not angle parking. Get 24 inches on either side of your driveway.
I'm only talking about where the, where the driveway is going into that particular property. If you're just putting that yellow paint there, just as you can in other areas, but where people don't angle park, they parallel park, but yet you have that button with the yellow paint. It's a caution, so that you can get, because it's between two driveways, three cars inside in there. Having that yellow paint there gives you enough to go to two parts and that's all.
And then the tail end of the car won't come out on that angle. I can see what she's saying. That couldn't work, Grant? Yeah, even if you extended it just a little bit, a little extra, that might, that could work. When you angle park, yeah.
It would be, it would be at least-
Holy cow.
Eight feet, if not more, because your average car is nowadays is between 16 and 20, 25 feet, at 20 feet, you know, a large truck, four-door, eight-foot bed.
Because you're talking about the diagonal of the bed.
Right, right. If I have a car parked on a 45-degree angle, I'm gonna have to yellow out at least eight feet to get the back of that, end of that car.
That many, eight feet?
Yep.
I think what-
But only, isn't that on one side?
On one side, right.
It's only one side?
I'm inclined to, to, uh, you know, give them what they're asking for. It seems reasonable, and, uh, and then let's see how it works out for a year. Let's hold off on the lines.
No lines and just signs with gates?
Change the ordinance. The chief, the chief can tell his guys, the ordinance is different now. They're, they're allowed to park there, uh, in the winter months, and then we'll see what happens, if they can all, you know.
Right.
It's hard to imagine if people can't, you know.
And are you saying it's what's happening anyway right now?
Yes.
Pardon me?
That's what's happening right now anyway.
Yeah, except they're getting warnings, and tickets will be-
And now that, and then all of a sudden, the warnings started, and then-
Exactly.
Okay.
Having it, um, the ordinance with the same thing with the, um, right turn on reds and the, um, the metered parking is probably the best bet.
Have everything coincide?
Same thing coincides.
Okay.
Yeah.
See, I come to you guys, and I get a-
See, and you get, see that? You need us, Ray.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, now who's gonna do all that?
Right, and we'll put it on for the next meeting.
Okay, we'll take a look at the ordinance, the streets that it affects. He can take a look at the painting. We can take a look at the signs. We can take a look at all of that. But I, the, the meters presently coincide with the red on red? Does everything coincide right now? Everything's the same? Okay. Okay. Anybody else have anything?
No, thank, no, I'm fine.
What time is it? 4:31. So, what we're gonna do then is, we're gonna adjourn the work session. We're gonna take about a three-minute comfort break. We'll come back, and we'll start the meeting. So, at this point, I need a motion to adjourn. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned.